Please rise for the, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Burlington will be holding the June 1st, 2023 meeting. The Planning Board is a hybrid meeting. The Governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020 authorizing remote meetings under General Law Code 3080, Section 20, and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31st, 2025.
As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on the agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Those seeking to attend remotely may do so via the following: townofburlingtonwebex.org is the URL. Our meeting number is 2332-722-2548. You can join us via WebEx on your phone at 617-315-0704. We're being broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel, which can be found on Comcast 99, RCN 15, and Verizon 41. We're streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Government Facebook page.
And I think that is all. So we'll start with the reorganization. Motion's need to be made to vote for a new Chair, Vice Chair, and for a member clerk. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion for Barbara for Chair?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I would like to make a motion that we elect Brenda Rappaport as our Vice Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I would like to make a motion to vote Jessica Sutherland as Member Clerk.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right.
Well, not everybody, just me and Brenda.
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you, board members. Oh, she's supposed to say-
Where's the clerk? Oh, there or here?
She's saying, is the clerk supposed to say-
Is it matter?
Oh, I don't-
No, no, you did.
Just because the last time, yeah, okay.
That works? Ceremonial switching up in the air. So, the first thing on our agenda tonight is announcements. Staff, could you help us out with that?
Sure. There will be a sketch, a sculpture event on June 3rd from 10 to 12 at the Burlington Sculpture Park. Winning sketches will be displayed at the library. Refreshments will be provided by Wegmans. And they, and I don't, maps are available there. And so, I think that-
But there is one thing I wanted to add.
Sure.
Because the weather is iffy, our rain date is Sunday.
Okay, so rain date of Sunday, June 4th. Burlington Pride Celebration is happening on June 10th from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on the Town Callman. It's a family-friendly event that will include music, dancing, crafts, and entertainment. This year, it's dedicated to Mr. Leo Abramov, who co-founded the celebration with his wife, Kellyanne, three years, Kerry Lynn, three years ago, to make Burlington a more inclusive place. Leo passed from cancer this past March, so this year, it'll be dedicated to him. Eversource Community Conversations. Caleb, you have been in contact with Eversource, and they are going to be doing two community conversations, public meetings about what they're planning to do. There's one on Wednesday, the 14th, from 12 to 2:00 p.m. via Zoom. There's also one in-person at the Burlington Public Library on June 21st, which is a Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:00. The Town Hall is hosting a shred day. That's from our friends in the Town Clerk's Office, June 17th from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 in the parking lot behind Town Hall. And then Juneteenth will be celebrated on June 19th, and then all Town Offices will be closed on that day.
Okay, thank you. Do any other members have announcements? It's Ernie, please go ahead.
The Sanloboi Light, Stain Boil Light Committee will be holding a meeting on Monday, this coming Monday, and it is strictly on Zoom, and it's at 5:30. And the agenda and late is on the Town Calendar.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Something that might just encourage your reindeer, just wanted to know that the Francis Wyman Carnival is the same day from 10 to 2.
And so is Cars and Cops, or Cops and Cars. I'm not sure which one it is, how it goes. But, yes. June is a very busy month.
Yes, and the first weekend is very busy.
Okay, we do not have any legal notices or non-approvals, so we'll move on to administrative matters. Our first administrative matter is Item A, a discussion, a request for approval of a minor engineering change, 10 Corporate Drive. The Gutierrez Company is the applicant. Is there anyone here representing the Gutierrez Company?
Is Scott?
Scott, boys and girls, I'm representing the Gutierrez Company for the next one, which is 1 Wall Street.
Would you like us to take them out of order?
Yes, please.
Okay, okay. I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Madam Chair, I'd like to take Item B out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Do we have to table the first one?
No. So, Madam Chair, I'd like to table Item A and put Item B in front of Item A for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. So, Item B, let's get to that. It is a discussion, a request for approval of a minor engineering change at 1 Wall Street. The Gutierrez Company is the applicant. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Dan Nedinsky, representing the Gutierrez Company, the applicant. As part of our ongoing efforts to attract and retain tenants at 1 Wall Street, which was first developed in the 1980s, we have ongoing interior renovations as far as common areas, as well as facade modernizations. Our minor engineering change application is for the items redlined on the screen, consisting of adding 20 electrical vehicle charging stations, accessibility improvements. Right now, the handicap spaces are far away from the main entrance, so we're planning on shifting them towards the entry, as well as improving the path in and out of the building for tenants, including landscaping improvements that have been approved by Conservation Commission. There's no changes to drainage and a net reduction in impervious of approximately 500 square feet.
Okay. Staff, if you have it.
We don't have any comments. I know that we checked in with Conservation, and they seem to be really happy with kind of the tree species and how things were going to be handled in this area. So, we don't really have any comments on this, ma'am.
Can we get a little more specificity on what the landscaping is?
Yes, so there's 17 trees right now that are either diseased, dead, invasive, non-native, and we're planning on removing those 17 trees and replacing it with 23 trees, as well as hundreds of shrubs and other ground cover. And the purpose is really to open up the entry. Right now, we've had comments from tenants that it's hard to find the front door of the building. And along with the landscaping improvements, we're also adding additional outdoor seating area to allow people to eat and spend time outside better.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
I just, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I know that you're, you're gonna lose one handicap parking space. How many handicap parking spaces remain?
I'd have to count them, but I know it's compliant with code.
I'd count, I see 11 on the plan. There might be other locations, but I believe this is where the parking change is.
That's sufficient, staff.
The one space we're losing isn't a handicap space. It's a regular parking space.
Okay. Additionally, where you're going to have outdoor seating, is there some type of barrier, or is there some type of protection for those sitting outside where there is parking neighboring that seating area?
So-
Or, how does that look, what does that look like?
So, we're not adding any seating areas in the front of the building. The kidney-shaped area is existing. What we're really adding it is towards the, it's the gray area, so, yeah, that's a reconfiguration of existing entryway. And planned south, a little further south down on the sheet. So, we're adding that gray area, which is in the parking. And then where it says cafe entrance, that's being added, but it's protected by the curb line and the area in front of it.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, board members? Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, just a quick question. So, you're saying you're adding 20, 20 charging stations, so that's 20 parking lots?
So, there, if you go plan-
Not clearing that, yeah.
So, the entire top row is 21 spaces. Each one of those red squares serves two spaces, so there's 10 charging stations. Each one has two cords on it.
I have one question. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the time being.
Do you have a charging station where any of the handicap people are?
So, where the red hashed-out space, the one space we're losing, that's intended to be the space on each side would be for handicap accessible chargers.
Okay.
So, both, so both of those spots will be, will be able to have access to charging?
Correct. On either side of that hashed-out space.
And how many, so you got, actually, Tony, go ahead. You want to continue asking?
Well, no, no, I, I just was interested-
No, I think that's an interesting point that I, you know, if, so how many, you've got two handicap that have access to the, to the charging stations, but how many handicap spots out there that exist?
There's 11 handicap spaces that exist. These two spaces we're adding for handicap use aren't full ADA with the full path to the building, but either side of it, it has the space for them to go in and out of the vehicles. So, there are, it's 20 handicap, sorry, 20 charging spaces. Two of those 20 are adjacent to that blocked-out space, so they have easier ingress and egress out of their vehicles.
Will they be marked handicapped?
They would not be marked handicapped.
I feel like they should be, because other people will park on them if they-
Yeah, what, what do you mean, they're not gonna be marked handicap?
Because the pathway to the building is, it's got, it's got-
So-
Hey, Joy. Sorry, I'm late. I didn't pick up that you guys started earlier. It's been so long. I apologize for that.
You'll have to come and visit us more often.
Yeah, apparently. Scott Weiss with the Gutierrez Company with, with Dan. The handicap charging accessible spaces are, will be indicated that they are handicap accessible, but they're usually not handicap only, if you will. That's the process in the, as, you know, going through with the utility company to make accessible spaces, but not restricted spaces. Because they want, they want to make sure that the, the chargers are used and accessible to anyone. So, it's not a, an only, it's sort of, if you will, a public restroom with accessible stalls are not restricted, but they are available. If you, if anyone comes in, you should use any available space first.
Yeah. I mean, the prob, the problem with the parking piece of it is that literally anybody, you know, there's, there's a lot more people out there that are not handicapped that would be grabbing those charging spots and would prevent the handicap people from using them. What, what if, what if you took a charging, the chart, like, two outside spots that maybe the inside were designated, let's put, you put a charging station between two spots, and one of them is a designated handicap spot, and one of them isn't, but it's accessible, so that you can at least guarantee one of those spots is gonna be a handicap spot? That will, will only be designated for people with proper placards or plates. So, but it still would be accessible to somebody on the other spot next to it that may or may not be. It would be handicapped accessible, but not handicap designated.
Yep. I mean, you could certainly reserve one space for, you know, handicap placards only. Again, we're following the utility company, which is also dictated by DEP as to, as to how the spaces are laid out. They want accessible spaces-
Right.
-to be there, but not be restricted, because again, the, the intent is to make the, the space and the chargers available as much as possible. They don't want a charger necessarily not being used for that reason, but-
No, I, I get it, but it, in other words, it just doesn't seem fair to me.
But I think the handicap people, they need to be closest to the building, but all the cars seem to be, you know, a lot of cars are charged today, so they're putting more and more use. So, they'd only have one spot by the plan right now with two people that could use it out of the 11.
Two, two parking spots.
Two of the, two of the 20.
But when you said not designated for the handicap, there's not a handicap-
No. It's handicapped accessible, but it's not handicap designated.
Well, see, I think it should be designated.
I do, too.
Because of the handicap person. Do you feel comfortable with that?
We, we would need to confirm that DEP and Eversource, because they have a say in this in terms of how this is laid out, that they don't have any restrictions on such, on restricting the use.
Right. So, I mean, maybe you send back that the board really wants that restricted use, and maybe if they said no, we wouldn't give them the spots. We wouldn't give them the, the charging stations. Because that's, maybe, they might make, you know, more-
It just doesn't seem fair to a handicap person to have to walk further because they only have, I think it should be designated because they are handicapped.
No, they may not have to necessarily walk further. They may not get a charging station. That's really the bottom line, and that's not fair. I mean, if you're gonna make a charging station-
I'm sorry, Ernie, please go ahead first.
I, I think maybe, I thought Joe was heading in this direction. Can you, can you make it so the charging station will reach both the non-handicap and the handicap spot? I think that's, you know what I mean? So that- So, you don't have to, you probably don't have to even go to DEP, but if the cable was long enough to reach the handicap spot, which was on the end of the row, then, yeah, might be a way around.
I was kind of not going, the direction I was going was more, if you want to put it in the middle of two, so at least one of the two is gonna be designated handicap, and the other one can be accessible to handicapped. And then you do that in another location as well. So, you've got two designated handicaps and then two accessible to handicaps. So, you, four that they could access, two that are designated for them. I mean, it just seems fair to me that they're, you know, simply because of a disability, they're not gonna have access, could potentially not have access to a charging station. I mean, that's literally what it comes down to be, right? I mean, they could have those spots taken by people that are not disabled, even though they're, you know-
They're shared use spots.
They're accessible, right, they're shared use.
I mean, in, in the current environment, most of the, the spots are not necessarily filled, you know, the charging spots are not filled, and this does not preclude adding more as the policy and the use of electric vehicles changes over time.
The problem with that, Scott, and I'll be honest with you, and I'm, you know, a lot of times, like you're saying, they're bigger spots. People might be like, hey, you know, I got an expensive car here. I'm going in the bigger spot. No one's gonna hit my car, but yet it's not designated, you know, as a disability spot, so I can go to that spot. So, I'll take that spot before I take the narrower spot, you know what I mean? I could see those spots being taken up by-
So, we can certainly, I'm, I'm confident we can mark them and designate them with a handicap emblem on the ground?
Well, it's the, it's the legal one that I, that I'd like to see.
Yeah, it's the legal signage.
The signage that I would like to see there, not, not the sign.
And then add the sign to one of the two spots, so that that's definitely reserved, the other one certainly accessible.
Thank you. Can I just interject? I think that, just, staff, can we write the decision so that two of the charging stations are designated handicapped spaces, and we, we condition it that way? And if you go back and there's a problem with the DEP, you'll come back to us and we'll readdress it, so that we can get it done tonight?
Sure.
Does that satisfy the law? Anyone?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that. Staff, do you have concerns?
Well, so, I, my concern is just, is this setting a precedent for every other charging station in the rest of the town? Is that something you guys are gonna require?
We should set a precedent.
I don't see why we shouldn't. I mean, it, well-
Yeah, I mean, the handicap, so.
So, I, my other question is, is this industry standard?
I don't know. My, the only concern I have about setting a precedent is, in this situation where you have 20 spots, I'm fine with designating two, but there are many places in town where we have two spots.
Right.
And then you can't really designate one of them handicap, because there's only two, and they won't get used to them.
Nor would they necessarily be close enough to really accommodate a handicap, you know, a, 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 you know, not that they have to go in the building while they're there. They could literally pull up a charge if they needed to, but.
I mean, I, I think in this instance, I'm comfortable with, with that condition, and like I, like Barbara, it stated, you know, if they need to come back to us, they need to come back to us.
Okay.
On that note.
Yes, Bill, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at the landscape plan again, and you said you're adding 24 trees, but removing 17. Is that correct?
Uh, 23.
Yeah, and where, where are the 17 that you're removing? Because I see, I can see in the red which ones you're adding. Can you point those out?
So, we have it on, this is the, the plan showing the new trees that are going in. We have a plan printed out that I could show you with all the ones that are being removed.
Are they being, are the ones that being removed, are they in the similar place where you put the new ones, or?
They're similar locations. The main portion of it is we're replacing non-native, invasive, diseased, and, and dead trees with native trees. But they're similar locations.
Okay.
So, that's showing the new ones that are going in.
Yeah.
It's gray one, is that the old?
The shadow one.
Yeah.
Well, there's a lot of shadow ones, so I'm trying to figure out which shadows are going and which ones aren't. Is there ones, are they marked with the diamond, like the circles?
They're on the full plan set. Which, okay.
Which was submitted?
This one, do you know which sheet?
Well, so, if I looked, there's a lot of trees here.
In the shadows.
Right, and so, are they, are they getting rid of these here? All, is this all gonna be barren now, or they?
This one.
Which ones are they removing? If they're removing all these, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5-
On this screen, wherever there's an X, it's a tree that's being removed.
Okay.
And then there's also, on the next page, there's three trees across the street that are being removed, and all three of them are currently dead.
Will you be replacing the ones across the street? Yes. So-
Not the ones that cross the street.
No, they have, they are, they're new.
Yes.
So, is it fair to say that the 17 that are being removed-
The problem is-
-will have replacement trees in your parks?
Oh, okay, good, good.
Correct, yep.
Do they're current?
Okay, have to behave.
Okay. Does that, Bill, does that satisfy you?
That's good. Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right.
So, just clarified, so we're gonna, those two spots will be, have the proper signage, and will be the closest and most accessible to the building.
Of the-
Of all of the-
The charging spots, because they're not right against the building.
No, exactly. Of all the charging spots, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's where they're marked, that really is.
The most accessible direct line to come across into, into the building.
Okay. All right. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, may I have a motion to approve the request of GPI TGC 10 Corporate, 10 Corporate Owner LLC property owner for approval of a minor engineering change for property located at 10 Corporate Drive, 12.
That's A, that we, just kidding, we chaired, I mean, we tabled.
Just kidding. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of the Gutierrez Company for approval of a minor engineering change for property located at 1 Wall Street to allow for landscape and hardscape modifications to enhance the primary building entrances and attractiveness of the site, as well as provide a better ingress experience for current and future tenants. This will include the addition of electric vehicle charging stations at 20 spaces, with two spaces being handicapped. These changes reduce impervious area by 454 square feet and result in loss of one parking space to facilitate handicap accessible to two, to two EV charge spaces, as reflected on the redline site plan set entitled 1 Wall Street Burlington Mass Permit Drawings, prepared by Michelangelo Landscape Architect dated May 20, 2023, consisting of two sheets, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So, 7-0.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to go back to Item A.
Second.
For discussion purposes.
Move to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? Abstained? Okay, 7-0. Item A is a discussion request for approval of a minor engineering change, 10 Corporate Drive. The Gutierrez Company is the applicant.
Good evening. Again, sorry for missing the start time, but appreciate, at least Dan was able to check the agenda to do that. So, this is a very, very similar application. There are no trees involved, but the majority of this work is to add 24 parking spaces that would be, have EV chargers, buy dual station chargers, so there are 12 new chargers being added. They're all on the south side of the existing building, and then associated with that, we do have the relocation of existing parking, existing parking spaces that we have found to not be ADA compliant, so we are moving them to a location. The slope of the driveway was too steep, so we're relocating them to the opposite side of the entrance so that they are in compliance. And with that, we've also adding a little amenity of a bocce court outside the building to hopefully attract some more tenants and users there. So, that's the summary of this change. The work to rehab 10 Corporate Drive on the interior is essentially done, and we continue to market and look for tenants and lab users to the building, and we'll hopefully be able to, you know, provide some, some people and some groups and announcements in the, hopefully near future, hopefully very near future, but continue to work.
So, it's 20 charging stations?
It is 12 charging stations serving 24 parking stalls.
And one of those stations, so I mean, two cars, is handicapped accessible?
In the very same way, and I don't know if you can see the cursor moving around, there's a striped-out space so that you have adequate room on either side, and I would understand the same, same condition being in place here to make that handicap, handicap reserved, not just accessible.
Thank you. Staff, do you have any comments on this?
No, but we're excited. I remember the original, when this was originally permanent, and excited to see it come to fruition.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any board members with questions?
So, we're just-
Yes?
Maybe, I don't know if, I, I don't think it's unwise if we sent a letter from the Burlington Planning Board to the Mass DEP and just asked them to be aware of the handicap spaces. I mean, I'm sure, just a one paragraph.
Maybe ask for their input as well.
Well, give them our input, right.
Give them our input.
Right, right.
Okay. I think that would be appropriate.
Because we're going, we're, this is just the beginning.
Yes.
So, with this, we're adding two handicap spaces as well?
We're adding, that string, the ones that are striped, will be, instead of just handicap accessible, they will be handicap restricted through this plan, as in the previous plan.
So, both are just one?
Oh.
It's one charger, two cars, correct?
Right. So, so there'll be two spaces, not-
Two spaces.
Two spaces, five, two chargers.
Madam Chair, make it, may I make a motion to-
Just a comment, may I? And I probably should have asked, I should probably have asked her on the last one. So, these, these charging stations, they're generic, they're not to one specific model-type car?
They are not, they are not Tesla-restricted or anything like that. They are open chargers for presumably any vehicle that, that can-
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And they, Tesla- And they, Tesla also has adapters that will adapt, and they can use those as well, right? So it can be any, any kind, yeah.
So Teslas can use them as well. They're generic chargers.
Madam Chair, may, make a motion to approve the request of GBI TGC Ten Corporate Owner LLC for approval of a minor engineering change for property located at Ten Corporate Drive to allow for twelve new dual-port electric vehicle charging stations, supporting electric vehicle charging at twenty-four parking spaces, including two handicap, two handicap restricted locations. In addition, five existing accessible parking spaces will be relocated to ADA, MAAB compliant, and a bocce court will be added as an outdoor building amenity, as reflected on the Redline Site Plan Set entitled Ten Corporate Drive in Burlington, Massachusetts. Middlesex County Site Plan Prepared by EBS Group, dated March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, revised in May eighth, eighth, two thousand twenty-three, consisting of one sheet, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions, as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Seven, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we are moving on to item?
No, matters of appointment.
Yes, matters of appointment.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion to take items seven A through seven I together for discussion purposes?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seven, zero.
Item seven A is a public hearing, application for approval of an amendment to a definitive subdivision plan, District Avenue and Park Place, New England Executive Park Investors Holdings LLC is the applicant. Item seven B is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to twelve point one point five PD special permit requirements of the zoning bylaws, zero, one hundred, three fifty, six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred, and twenty-four hundred, District Avenue. National Development is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm not gonna be voting on this at all. We usually sit back and.
Okay, thank you. The following agenda items are all special permits of the New England Executive Plan Park Development District zoning provisions for the property at zero, one hundred, three fifty, six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred, twenty-four hundred, District Avenue, where National Development is the applicant. And item C is for section four point one, light manufacturing or processing plants. D is four point two, laboratories engaged in research, experimental, and testing activities. Item E is four point four, hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge. And item F is four point five, generation or storage of hazardous waste limited to the volumes classified as very small quantity generator. Item G is, uh, four point twelve, biotechnology, research, development, and manufacturing. Item H is five point seven, discharges from man-made structures into the municipally, human, municipally zoned wetlands. And item I is six point sixteen, storage of oils and fuels, petroleum products, including storage for an onsite heating purposes and landscaping maintenance equipment in excess of fifty gallons. Madam Chair, I'm just gonna put it on the record, I feel like Liz likes you more than me.
So, welcome. Hi. And, uh, we know you, but please state your names and records.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and board members for the record, attorney Mark Vaughn, with Reuben Bronstein, representing the applicant, uh, this evening, and Katie Snyder, who's with, uh, National Development. Uh, I'm sure you remember us from the prior five hearings, I think, that we've had so far, but, uh, congratulations on your ascendancy to the chairmanship. So, um, pleased to be before you tonight. Uh, we didn't really have much of a presentation, to be honest with you. I know that, um, at your prior hearings, we've had a, um, ample opportunity to get into the, the plans and renderings and all of that, and I think we're at a spot, based on the last meeting, where, um, not to speak for the board, obviously, or staff, but there was a comfort level with everything that was before the board. Uh, I think staff wanted, uh, more opportunity to develop and, um, come up with appropriate, uh, decision conditions and whatnot, that memorialized the commitments that we had made previously in terms of mitigation was, making sure that the Mall Road beautification was part of the first phase, the Vine Brook part of, uh, second building, um, so on and so forth. So, um, I know that there was also a discussion at the prior hearing about the, uh, bike lanes on District Ave, whether we should have them, should not have them, and based on discussions with staff on that topic, I think, uh, was felt that it would be best to not, um, have those committed to at this time, but rather that there would be a, a commitment that we would continue to explore it, and if we were to come up with an opportunity in the future to provide something, we would come back to the board at that time to, to present it. So, I know it's a, kind of, a more involved conversation, perhaps, on the, on the, the bike lanes and the, um, uh, smart streets, or, uh, complete streets, I'm, I'm sorry, um, some degree, you know, dependent upon how that all shakes out from Mall Road itself in terms of the initiatives that are ongoing through Melissa Tentakulis and Liz and their, um, their work in that regard. But, uh, suffice it to say that, you know, National Development is committed to continue to explore that and happy to come back in the future as part of that, so. But, w- we have members of the team that are here remotely, should there be any questions on any aspects of it, but, um, you know, I, I, I think that we were at a spot where, you know, there was, um, comfort, but we just weren't quite there in terms of having decisions documented and whatnot. So, Katie, is that a fair summary?
Great summary.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, just so that, I wanna make this clear, am I correct in understanding that nothing that we're doing here would preclude the addition of bike lanes in the future, it would just be a matter of restriping?
That, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Staff, do you have anything else to add?
Um, no, um, that's not true. There are things, I'll just give you guys kind of a quick overview. Um, staff did have a meeting with the applicant, um, on Monday, I believe, no, Tuesday, we weren't here Monday. Um, and we just got, we went through the draft decision, discussed, um, the order of operations, essentially, so we kind of decided that the first, um, mitigation item would be getting a plan from the landscape architect regarding all of middle set, all of Mall Road median and, and how that should, should be handled. Um, next is, you know, when they begin the first building, they're gonna actually implement that plan along their frontage with, with, um, Mall Road. Um, the second, um, if, you know, second phase, so building B or C, um, the, I believe, it's the, the River Walk will be completed.
Yep.
Um, and then, once both buildings are completed, I, is there something, or is it?
I think the third, you know, completion of the third phase, that's when, if there was the trigger for coming back on the bike.
Yeah.
Then would be before a building permit is issued for the third phase. So we would come back and discuss it at that time.
Okay.
And if, if, if there's a plan that's adopted, we would then implement at completion of that third phase.
Um, the other question that I had, that, um, I was hoping we could finalize today is, uh, our clarification about, you know, I know that the, um, that the River Walk and the expansion of that is happening, um, with the building of the second phase, of the second building. When would weigh finding happen? Do you have a phasing for what, when weigh?
I think we addressed that in here as well. So I think, um, we talk about implementing, um, the areas that are in the existing spaces as part of the first phase, so up closer to the retail, call it the retail zone, for lack of a better word, it's part of the first phase. Um, and then we would adopt and upgrade the weigh finding, sort of approximate to each of the, um, future buildings. So it would be kind of phased in some ways, just as the park and the campus evolves with the development.
Okay. Um, and the other clarifying question is that, um, you know, in the planning world, we'd like to not, you know, we like to, parking garages are not the most beautiful structures, and what we like to do to activate the first floor is to, um, not, but, um, put something on the first floor, so we're still gonna have bicycle parking and facilities for that will, will kind of, that's still gonna be the, the plan for, for the phasing.
Yep. And we would obviously continue to include the, you know, additional glass and circulation that we've added to the, throughout this design process, so.
So, those were the things that, you know, staff would need to call, needed clarification on for the decision, but, um.
I just have one question.
Yeah?
Just to clarify. You know the bike shop that they're, they show in the picture? Is that for bike rentals, or?
I think it would be intended to be used for bike storage, but done in a way that we can sort of celebrate and activate that first floor with the glass that we have, and...
Okay, so it's for, more was for keeping the bikes there?
That's right. And I think, um, in, you know, as the future of that building evolves, it may become more, and we would be discussing what would be more in there, but for now, the consideration is to include it for bike storage and really try to activate the sort of first floor ground plane of that space. We have that in both, in both garages, building B and, next to building B and next to building A.
Anyone thought?
Or you park your bike?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there could be like a little bike repair area or something there as well, you know, people need to get, you know, their bike worked on or something, but that, it's kind of.
This is a little off base, but if they had, you know how they have the blue bikes and?
Yep.
That's one of the rental stuff. I was thinking if they ever had bike rentals?
Yep.
That would have been, you know, for people at lunch to ride around.
Yep.
Like, I'm thinking, that would have been a nice trail.
We do, we, and we do include, you know, there's an area in front, along building, the building A frontage on District Ave, there'll be an area available for, if, if there's a blue bike, that's considered, we would include it there.
That's something I think that, do you wanna start talking about, um, at a higher level, so that if there's a blue bike system here?
Yeah.
We don't want another system, a different office park. We'd like to have the systems all work together, so that people could perhaps bike from here over to.
Yeah.
I was just, cause when it says bikes, bike.
No, no, I understand.
Oh, yeah, I didn't.
Yep.
But I think the blue bike idea is great. We just wanna make sure that everybody in town's using the same.
Right.
System, so that they can drop off.
Cause it's a big spot. I'm just curious if it's gonna be.
Well, I think the great, I mean, the great idea about that is that it's, you know, at lunchtime.
At lunchtime, people could.
You know, people could jump on a bike and go ride the bike to the sandwich to Press Cafe, and, you know, instead of driving their car, or, you know, whatever, ride the bike over there, and they could maybe drive back if the path were along the, you know, the, the river, they could sit, you know, drive back by the river and have a sandwich at the, you know, at a, at a bench there or some, you know, a reason to go out and use that stuff. But, one of the other things that I had questions, is a follow-up on that, is that, you know, does the bike, does the bike, we still have a bike path committee in town?
Um, we did, before I got here, apparently.
No. Don't be saying a hard no with this woman. That's a hard no for Marie.
There was a report, allegedly, that's probably somewhere, that I have not been made aware of, that it hasn't been active since I've been here for seven years.
Hasn't been disbanded, but it just hasn't been active.
Correct.
I don't know if, uh, town clerk's still listed on the committees, I think.
Yeah, I don't think it's active at all, Joe.
Cause these are the types of things that you wanna get some input on, right?
Great. And so, I mean, I don't think there's anything we can do about it tonight, but I think it certainly would be appropriate to ask staff to reach out and see if there's anyone on said bike committee.
Status of.
Right. Yes, yeah. Cause, you know, as it stands right now, this, this plan doesn't have any, you know, bike intentions, so I think, you know.
And, and, um.
Oh, and Nash.
Millie Nash, yeah? That's right.
Yeah. So. I think that's a good idea.
I think, yeah, I, I totally agree. Let's definitely reach out and see if there's like a, a bike committee, or are they going to be one formed, or anyone has any interest, but, you know, as it stands right now, I think the plan looks as, as good as that, you know, as we want it to be. And it's checked all the boxes, stands the, the bike issue.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, a question, if I could. Uh, are, are you still going to have, uh, I guess it's painting on the road, or signs that say share the road, or something like that? I mean, they, obviously. Just because it's not a bike lane there, doesn't mean people aren't gonna ride.
No, but legally, legally, anybody can ride a bike on the road, right? So it's not, once you go the next step and create a, now, a, a bike path, you better do it in a safe way, but, you know, if you, there's nothing that says you can't ride your bike on the road.
There is.
I just didn't want, just, I was trying to, and I probably can't do it, I didn't wanna cut off the road rage thing where everybody's yelling at that guy to get out of the way.
Oh, I can guarantee you, there's a lot of that going on in Cambridge.
I'm with Ernie, I'm with Ernie, though. I would like to see something that just encourages bike riding, because how this plan stands now, even though there's the bike storage, by removal of the bike lanes, I think likelihood of bikers feeling safe, um, in that area, I think would be slim, and just with the benefits of, of what biking brings to an area, like employment, and there's been studies about how it leads to increase in retail sales, I just think it would be a mess for us to not encourage bike usage.
And, and just to let them know that they also have a right to use the road, such as on, I think it's Blanchard Road that has the, isn't it?
Well, because it's part, that's part of our bike path.
Ah.
So the bike path actually, it goes through the, and then it jumps on to Sunset, and then on to Mildred, and then on to, on to, you know, Stony Brook Post, in other words, we, we have areas that we have no other way to accommodate, other than road, to get them to the next leg of the path. So, we've designated those areas as bike path, but they're, it's roadway, you know?
Yep, okay.
So I think what I'm hearing from Ernie and Jessica is perhaps we could ask for a couple of signs that say, "Bike friendly roadway," or something like that.
Share the road, yeah.
Share the road.
Share the road.
Yeah, just share.
With a picture of a bike. That would be very easy to implement. Okay. Um, I wanna take a minute and see if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on this matter. This is a public meeting, is there anyone who would like some input?
I see no one.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing on these matters.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's six, zero.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of National Development on behalf of, uh, New England Executive Park Investors Holdings LLC for an amendment to a definitive subdivision pursuant to the Planning Board subdivision rules and regulations related to roadways within the District Burlington. Said amendment requests approval of the following, I modification of the District Avenue cul-de-sac right-of-way to modify lot lines, to create a new lot, uh, off of District Avenue improvements within the right-of-way limits, including but not limited to curb line and sidewalk adjustments, curb cuts, driveway connections, utility connections on District Avenue and Park Place, Road A, as detailed in the subdivision plans entitled subdivision lot thirty on LC Plan Three Ten Forty-nine K and Lot Fifty-eight LC Plan Three Ten Forty-nine R in Burlington, Massachusetts, in the District Burlington Modified Master Plan Prepared by Vanessa Hang, Vanessa Hangen, Brussels Incorporated, dated January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, prepared by VHB Incorporated, dated April twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, subject to the following terms and conditions, as amended.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay, six zero, which thirteen.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd also like to make a motion to approve the request of national development for approval of a special permit pursuant to section twelve point one point five, Plan Development District of the zoning bylaws in section four point one, light manufacturing or processing plants, four point two laboratories engaged in research experiments and testing activities, four point four hazardous toxic materials chemical use, four point five generation or storage of hazardous waste limited, four point twelve biotechnology research development manufacturing, five point seven discharges from the M.A. structures, and six point sixteen storage of oils, infuels, petroleum products of the New England Executive Park Plan Development District zoning bylaw provisions for property located at zero, one hundred, three fifty, six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred, twenty-four hundred District Avenue, as shown in the plan entitled the District Burlington Modified Master Plan prepared by Vanessa Hangen, Brussels Incorporated dated January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, subject to the terms and conditions contained in exhibit A attached, um, as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six zero. Somehow, you still had to read more than I did.
I mean, I'm totally getting the short end of the stick.
You are.
But I feel like this, it, it's a full completion of all this. Feel good about that.
So, um, I think, I think that covers it, right? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
It was a pleasure working with you.
I appreciate all of your time in reviewing this, and I know it's been several meetings, but I think the end result is certainly better from where we started, so with the, with the input of the boys. So, want to thank, um, Liz and Caleb too, I know they put a lot of time into this, taking our calls and working with us to kind of get through it all, so.
Don't forget to send cough drops anytime you-
Thank you.
I'm glad you asked. It was a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay, um, so we don't have any meeting, uh, meeting minutes tonight, but we do have a few discussion matters. First up is transportation demand management, and Liz is going to speak with us about that.
Sure, so, um, one of the biggest complaints we hear, and I know you guys hear, is about traffic. Um, and so TDM is a way, um, is a manage, is a way to manage different modes of transportation, um, and I found a quick two-minute video that I think is helpful, and I have a quick PowerPoint, um, and so I wanted to share that with you. Um, sorry, Bill, we're talking about tran- transportation demand management.
Okay, thank you.
You didn't miss anything.
You didn't miss anything. Share computer audio, automatically optimize.
Traffic is a big thing, it's just going to show up everywhere.
No doubt. Thank you.
Is it sharing?
There we go.
I hope you guys can hear it. We're gonna see if this works. All right, I've never done this before, we're gonna see if it works.
Doing good.
Transportation demand management, or TDM, is how to reduce congestion for redistribution, applicable to incentives and disincentives rather than road building.
For years, engineers have tried to completely traffic congestion by building more roads, highways, and bargains, but this only encourages more people to drive and you can't get easier for people to drive.
There's a fun term called the road building kettle. The more you build, the more you have to keep building, same with-
In an urban center, TDM is about getting people from point A to point B the best way possible. In a city, that often means less single-passenger vehicles.
Without mine, TDM has to make these roads most efficient and reduce fatalities.
Programming includes things like flexible railroads, carpooling programs in workplaces, affordable transit penses, and road tolls.
Education, marketing campaigns and events promoting alternative transit, school programming, maps and signage.
Infrastructure, creating bike lanes, public bike facilities, and bus shelter improvements.
Compared to building wider roads, more time to last, TDM is a cheaper and more efficient strategy. Thanks for all, check out our other videos for more need-to-know information.
We're Plant Facts, please share this video, because we always-
Thanks, Plant Fact, Plant Facts. Uh, I have, um, I'm gonna share my PowerPoint now. So, why I'm, why am I, um, making you watch this, these videos? Um, basically, I am, um, thinking, or probably going to bring forth word to, um, September Town Meeting, a bylaw that require, requiring a certain level of TDM measures, um, for all new projects, um, probably above a certain size with a certain number of employees. Um, and other towns have done it, Cambridge has a, a really robust TDM measure, um, Boston does, I know Lexington does, and with the amount of transportation coming in, um, or amount of single occupancy vehicles coming into town, I think it's important that, um, we get our businesses involved in trying to, um, provide, uh, different options. Um, we, in the past, all of our decisions have had kind of a generic TDM condition, but this would kind of, this would make it, I would, more official and make it part of the bylaw and make it more enforceable. Um, and also with, you know, I think that our online permitting system, a lot of these TDM measures also require, um, monitoring, so we would be getting a yearly report on what these companies are doing and how they're managing, you know, their, um, their, um, how people get to their work, so we can utilize our existing, um, technology that we have. And so, again, TDM strategies are more cost-effective than increasing roadway capacity, um, basically encouraging a shift from SOVs to non-SOV mode, single occupancy vehicles, to non-single occupancy vehicles. Um, you know, demand exceeds supply, which is why we get traffic congestion, um, you know, it, basically, people, there, I don't live in Burlington, but I know people that would not drop, would not take a job in Burlington because they do not want to deal with the traffic in Burlington. So, that's from somebody outside, oh, one eight oh three, um, it's, it's something to consider, and, you know, we're talking about, um, making sure that people are coming back to the, to Mall Road, Middlesex Turnpike, so we just want to, um, you know, do whatever we can, um, to reduce, to reduce that type of congestion. So, how can a place grow if it has a congestion? Move people in more efficient ways, so adjust work hours, you know, allow people to come in during different times, um, avoid making, you know, bringing services and goods closer together, we talked, we, if you came to the charrette, we talked about that, and Mills, um, with Melissa and her team. They're cost-effective, um, they're, you can, it attracts employees, it can be a benefit to employees, and you can add health, um, tax incentive, reduce air pollution, safety, public health, and just better urban design by, um, requiring these, um, these items. Um, so, we have a TDM, we are part of our TMA, we're part of the Middlesex Three Coalition, they have a Transit Management Association, um, with their, um, as part of their, their, um, company, and, um, I am going to be reaching out to them and working with them to kind of finalize the bylaw, to make sure that it makes sense for Burlington, and also match up with things that they offer, because we're already, we're already a member of that TMA, and so, um, I'm working with Stephanie Cronin, who I've worked with in the past, I think would be helpful as well. So, these are basic things, you know, universal transit passes, doesn't really apply here, applies to like a Boston, but parking cash-out, bicycle facility requirements, car sharing, and having a transportation resource center. Um, so parking cash-out, um, so, um, basic, if employers who offer parking benefits to their employees are required to offer an equal transportation fringe benefit, so in, in Cambridge, you, I think, there, there's a monetary sum that the, if you allow certain people to park, you have to equally provide transit, or money towards transit passes for the rest of your employees. You know, low-cost fringe benefit, helps businesses recruit, retain employees, um, you know, so, it's, it's kind of putting your money where your mouth is, to encourage people to change the way they get to places. Um, require bicycle facilities, you guys just did that with National Development, which was awesome, but, you know, it's not just providing bike lanes and a place to park your bike, showers, lockers, and other like storage facilities, I know that, um, what was it? It wasn't twenty, twenty-five, um, I know that one of the buildings that Scott built, Scott from Gutierrez built, they did, they did include showers and changing facilities for cyclists. And promote car sharing, I know that, um, Middlesex Three does this, um, so, you know, using Uber and Lyft, but carpooling with it, so it's multiple people, um, on off-street parking, you know, we can look at our codes and, um, car, shared parking requirements, I know that Melissa and I have been talking about that in the district area, when we talked to the district, you know, we wanted them to connect with them all, and it's all about, you know, oh, shared parking, but we, you know, if we, if we put, we, you know, we can, um, maybe make that a, a stronger requirement. Um, one of the other things that TDM requires is that each business has, um, a resource center and a, and a person who is in charge of managing that company's TDM and transportation demand management system. So, um, that would be, so, you know, that person would be in charge of relaying information back to us about, you know, how many employees, where are they coming from, how, what are the modes of transportation that they're taking, um, so forth and so on, so it's, it's also good for data gathering as well.
Well, you know what's a little confusing? They were just trying this past year to cut the MBTA from coming to Burlington, so that's what's confusing about that whole scenario, and I only know that because, you know, Mike works for the MBTA, and they had a really rally to keep the bus coming here. So, I'm just saying, all the way around, they should be trying to advocate for more buses as well, for that, and it was kind of sad, they, they want to take buses out.
Yeah.
The town can advocate for those things as well, through our reps and-
But I'm saying, they, that was, that was a-
Why, why Tonya, did they say?
They, Mike would probably know better what they were telling him, but basically, they didn't think there was enough activity on our buses, so that's what's confusing, you're saying people coming in that were using our people leaving Burlington to go in town, where he, he thought it was really good that they had people taking the buses like that, but the people up above obviously thought it wasn't, um, utilized the way it should be utilized, which is kind of sad, because I think if they would have, there's certain spots that the MBTA isn't allowed on, where there's businesses, and they can only go up to Oracle, or they can go down, you know, near Lakash's to get that bus, I mean, they could add more places, but they don't, and I'm not sure why, but, um, they could advocate where we have so many more businesses coming to town to help that as well.
I think if we put it in the bylaw, it makes it easier than trying to negotiate it every time.
Yes, you're right.
Because I can remember talking to, I think it was, you may remember Barbara Oracle, and they were willing to do a, um, uh, a, you know, a share the ride type thing where a whole bunch of people in a general area-
Right.
All get in a van and ride, but they weren't willing to do things like a guaranteed ride home, and that was a big-
Yeah.
Problem with that, because people, especially if, people that had school-aged children, they were going, well, what do I do if my child gets sick and I have to go home?
Yeah.
And Oracle was saying, well, your problem, and I was trying, and they just wouldn't, they wouldn't budge, so if it's, if something like that, it's in the regulation.
A problem, even our school buses, and I only know this from watching the school committee meeting, that everybody's driving their kid to school, but not necessarily using our bus system, so if there's something wrong with, I don't know what's wrong, because I don't have a little kid going to school, but they, they could advocate for more, you know, use of that, to take so many cars.
Well, actually, I think that's an interesting thought, because I know there's a lot of conversation about the new schools, and I'm not getting involved in that.
Let's not go down that road right now.
Though, is traffic, and it would be interesting to think about ways we could encourage parents to put their kids on the bus instead of driving them, but I think we're getting a little far afield. Um, I think this is great, I'd like to learn more about it, I'd like to hear more about how you're, how you want to proceed with this, I don't think we want to do it all tonight, but, um, I, I like where you're going with this. So, Bill, I think you had a question, right?
Nope.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood. Anyone?
Good.
Okay, all right, um-
Phil, just, just one comment more than any, is, you know, we, we can do all this that we want, but the reality is, when you're saying some of these businesses have bike things and some don't have bike things, I would think, before we ever had a pulse on this, they have a pulse on this, right? I mean, they're out there beating the, the doors down to get businesses to come into their, to lease their spaces and things like that, so they have their, their ear to the ground, way closer to the ground than we have our ear to the ground, and, and if they're not initiating these things, you know, I'm, that's, like, find that kind of odd, that they're not really initiating all of these things.
It's going to cost them.
Well, not really, I mean, you, no, they said it was us that advocated for this bike lane, and they could have done that, it's stri- it's striping, that's all it is, right? I mean, so-
But there are other things that, for example, and I'm not sure it's appropriate for Burlington, but one of the things Liz was talking about is if, if you provide free parking for your employees, you can somehow monetize that, say it's worth two hundred dollars a month, then the company needs to provide perhaps a discounted train or bus ticket to employees who don't take advantage of that parking.
Yeah.
They're not gonna, they're not gonna volunteer for that.
Where I work, right, we have free parking, but Lowell doesn't, and the people still have to pay, and they pay nothing for that.
Right, and what, what this is talking about is not so much trying to get equity with other towns, but rather trying, if you are encour, if you, we want to encourage people to other, use other modes of transportation, how can we make that more attractive, more affordable, e- easier to access? And maybe there are ways we can partner with companies to help them encourage that, or facilitate that, more than encourage it, facilitate it for their employees, and, again, it's a big subject, but I'm just glad that Liz is taking this on.
Yeah, I just, you know, my thing is it should be initiated from all around, I mean, these businesses, I, it, it don't make cost of money, but it costs them money simply because they're bringing in a lot of money, in other words, it's, you know, in other words, if they can bring in, if it's, it's really that important of a subject to these-
Yes.
Companies, then they, then, then it would draw, you know, more square footage, you know, money per square foot, or, you know, more companies to fill their spaces and more, you know?
I agree, it's a benefit, I wasn't, all I was saying is I don't think the fact that the companies haven't been bringing this forward, I don't think that we should take that as an indicator that it's not desirable or needed.
Right.
We might need to push for it.
Well, it's, it's true.
This whole concept, I think, is still in its infancy in suburbia.
In suburbia, that's the key, right there, exactly.
And that, exactly, because we're not a Cambridge.
That's right.
Well, that's what I was just going to say, when you're comparing Cambridge, Cambridge has buses up and down, they're, they're full, like, I'm just saying, like, that, that's part of-
I think there's not maybe as much of a need, and, and I'm not advocating, I'm not saying not to do this, I'm just saying, in general, it's usually driven by where the money is, and, and those are the landowner, those are the, the commercial, the commercial, you know, building owners, if, if they're driving it, then there's a need for it, and there's, and it's a money thing. If, if it's suburb, suburb, like you said, suburbia, there's maybe, not, not that we wouldn't want to see more people, you know, riding bikes to work, but the chances are, of, you know, of us driving people to drive bikes to work is not, it's slim to none in the, in the suburbs, we're, we're not going to get them to ride bikes unless they want to.
I think that this conversation is like in its infancy stages, like, you know, we're, we're, we're going in a lot of different directions, I think, you know, Liz, I think it's great that you're working with them, I think that, you know, again, you're hearing everybody's thoughts, I think it's definitely, maybe it's a subcommittee thing that you work with.
But the other part I don't understand is, we're taking away parking spots, because supposedly, I thought, less people were parked, right?
But it's, I don't think, I don't think it's necessarily, we're taking away parking spots.
Well, I thought like life science was less people in the business, I'm just saying, I think it was less people.
It's, it's less people, right, but we're also talking about a different clientele, and we're moving, you know, a new generation of folks in, and there's, there's definitely a lot of things to touch upon that we're never going to accomplish.
Let's rein it in a little bit here.
We actually limited the amount of parking that you can have, we need a special permit to increase parking over a certain amount, and that was done way back when to try and reduce the amount of traffic, so people had to share cars. We're not, we're not necessarily trying to kowtow to any of the landowners, we're trying to reduce the traffic in Burlington-
Right.
Because it appears that the perception is, is a lot of traffic.
Right, and it's a benefit to, it's a benefit to everyone, it's a benefit to the employees, it's a benefit to the employers, because they can attract employees, but, again, I think Liz is, is telling us that she's starting on this journey, and she's going to come back with some, some initial ideas, and then, I think we probably should form a subcommittee, but let's wait and, and wait for Liz's initial report, and then, I think it makes sense to form a subcommittee and see what we can do, and there may be ways that we can encourage businesses to work together for things that are not cost-effective for one company, it might be cost-effective if companies were to join together to, for, for certain amenities, so, anyway.
I'd be curious what Lexington is doing, because they're ahead of the game.
We can certainly reach out on, um, doesn't transportation and bike lanes.
What did I send you?
So, Caleb was actually doing a lot of research on this as well, um, he found Lexington had one, and Watertown had one, and those are more, but, I mean, I think that, you know, we are a huge employment hub, we're, you know, the, that district is, is, you know, it's, it's a regional center, so I think it, um, it behooves us to do something, and, you know, beyond employees and employers, getting cars off the road is better for everybody's overall health, so, um, your, you know, air quality, all that stuff, so, um, you know, I think about all that.
So, thank you, Liz, we'll look forward to your next report.
Yes.
Um, ever source update, what have we got?
We covered that earlier in the, in the meeting.
We covered that, yes.
We're good with that.
Do you have any updates? I know that you've been going back and forth with Miles.
No, they're just, they're just looking for people to be at, um, either of those community conversations that, once again, I'll reiterate the message, that they want to get ahead of this and really hear from residents of Burlington, particularly those who would be affected or be in the area closest by, um, to hear what, what they want to see, um, throughout all those steps of the process, so that before they go for permits, that they have that, kind of that, um, taken care of with the town.
Okay, thank you, so that we have the meeting dates, and hopefully some of us can attend. Does anybody have any new business they want to bring forward?
Subcommittee? I can do a subcommittee?
Yes, Bill has a subcommittee report, please go ahead.
So, from the Recreation Department, uh, a nugget that came up was that Burlington Youth Soccer Association wants to put in temporary lights in the soccer field at Mary Cummings Park in the fall to extend their evenings, uh, as, as it gets a little darker earlier. So, just kind of put that out to the planning board, you know, with, uh, with Mary Cummings and surrounding neighbors and wildlife, and it, these would be kind of gas-driven, you know, kind of if you, if you've been to the, uh, Christmas tree lighting, we're talking about those lights, probably four of them.
So, like, would we move them at the end of the season?
Yeah, they'd be on the wheels, you tow them away, so, just gotta maybe looking for the planning board's thought on that.
Are they going to be coming to us? Do we have a say in that? No.
No, just a, just a little feedback, I- No, just a, just a little feedback, I, personally, I wasn't crazy about it, I mean, uh, you have the lights over at Marvin, which Mike has used in, in, for the fall soccer, um, but, you know, looking to, to get more, more field and more time at this stuff, so.
I, I don't, I mean, apparently they're not asking our permission, I, if they wanted our input, I would kind of want to see what they look like, because if, when you say they're on wheels, is this like a trailer that they're backing up?
Yeah.
Because that's unsightly.
Yeah, 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 it's the same thing with the Christmas tree lighting, they, they bring the lights to, to light up Center Street or Olivia Way there, yeah.
How long did they stay there?
Well, so that's my question, it was like from September to November.
And these things are literally gas.
They're gas and they were engine.
Not, not, not natural gas.
I don't love the idea.
Yeah. The fumes from those things are crazy.
Yeah, so...
Running constantly with gas.
So, how does that affect the neighbor, the neighbors?
Then you have neighbors there, and then you also think about Mary Cummings and...
Is that what they've been doing?
No, they want to start that, the Burlington Circus.
So, if they're not asking our permission, what are they asking us?
So, I'm just giving you a feedback from the recreation, they asked my opinion, and...
Can we get some pictures?
I can, we can go to the internet and show you what they look like, I mean, same, same thing we do at Christmas.
From staff's perspective, because they are not gonna be there for a full year, and they are not permanent structures, they will not become, that's the reason why they will not be coming to your, to, to the board, yes.
Okay.
So, when people complain, who do they complain to?
I'm just gonna, yeah, I'm just gonna, yeah, recreation.
All right, I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Yeah, my pleasure, yeah. Yeah, I don't know if that goes to like a land use or conservation or...
Madam Chair, may I make a motion to adjourn?
Are we gonna have feedback on the charrette, or are we talk about that?
Oh, we didn't talk about the charrette.
Actually, thank you, um, I was wondering if maybe the consultants were going to sort of package something that, to share with everyone about what their takeaways were from the charrette.
So, we actually, so, um, we actually, on that Thursday, staff, um, had a meeting with them to kind of look at next steps, and so what I think we came, they came away with was that there would be kind of two nodes that they would really focus, I mean, it's such a large area that you can't really just put one zone, one zoning table, you know, zoning code for everything, or form-based code for everything, and so I think they're gonna really, um, break it up into nodes, so you know, you have the mall and the district, you have Wayside, you have kind of the in-between institutional use with Leahy, and kind of, um, look at draft zoning for those areas, um, and the, and then, um, come back, um, we don't have that yet, it was kind of, it was a week or so ago, um, but that I think is, is what they're gonna be doing moving forward, and so that, you know, getting ideas from what the residents and the community, um, wants, so that they can then go and do a draft of the zoning, and then we can kind of review it, and then that's when they'll be coming, yeah.
That's great, what I was wondering is, if at some point they were going to provide some sort of written summary of what they learned from the charrette, so what were the people telling them?
They were worried about traffic.
Yes.
But there was more, I'm sure, because I, just in the session that I attended, we actually didn't talk very much about traffic, so I'm wondering if there's some point at which they can give us...
I can reach out, um, I can reach out to Melissa Tentocless.
It would just be interesting to know, because, I mean, we all were involved at some point, and we all were in a group of breakout groups, and...
Lovely.
I'd like to know on a, on a high level, what were they, what were the takeaways from the charrette?
Um, I also, um, spoke with Melissa, and I kind of encouraged them to kind of not only give a summary, but kind of do a roadshow to all the land use committees, that's, I did encourage them to do that.
And we can wait our turn, that's fine, but I just wanted to hear some feedback from them.
Madam Chair, if I may, I had, I had some, I was thinking about this, and I thought it was on the agenda, was some, couple of the kind of key takeaways I took from it, and I'm not sure it was captured by, uh, you know, the consultants, but, uh, one thing, particularly on the second day, they did some exercises where you put these building blocks, and they had certain colors representing, uh, retail, and then you could put, uh, housing on top of it, and then you could put a parking garage, it was a different, uh, different color there, and one thing that, um, a town meeting member, Monty Pearson, uh, kind of came up with and indicated that, they were all talking about, you know, the big parking areas we had, and they were throwing down the big, big housing, right, and Monty saying, you know what, that's not gonna really get by if you can kind of talk about little housing, right, little kind of housing areas versus the huge apartment, 200, 300 apartment buildings, so I think Monty hit it right on the head, but they didn't have the, the kind of that, the, the structures like that, they were always thinking big blocks, and they, that's where they were coming from, they came up with, and one thing that I mentioned to them that they had that, they had everything for the big blocks for retail and housing and parking garages, but they didn't have any representation for open space. So, parks and things like that, I think that was a big gap, uh, in the availability to get folks to kind of figure out things, because on one, you had a trace, and we said, well, here's a park, and that was something that, they weren't thinking kind of that, at least at that, from that portion.
Did they have a park for housing that was not large apartment style housing?
No, they did not.
Okay, so that's a... They did have blocks for green spaces, though.
Uh, not, not the ones I hit, yeah, so I had to take a little pink sticky and say, okay, call this a park, right, to kind of set it up a little bit differently.
That's interesting, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I do remember, uh, so I was at one of the tables, and Melissa Tentocless actually came over, and she like took pieces of paper, and she wrote green on them, and she actually was putting them on the table.
Exactly, yeah, so I did the same thing, yeah, so, break my stick alike.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, okay, at some point we'll get a report on that.
That's what I had, thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Six zero, thank you.